Ready to go, Tom?
We are live.
Okay. Good evening, gentlemen. This is the Plain Township Zoning Commission meeting of December 12, 2018. I'll call it to order. Tom, would you call the roll, please, for attendance?
I will. Mr. Harrison?
Here.
Mr. Crawford?
Here.
Mr. Rambacher?
Here.
Mr. Seberger?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Firstly, let's look at the agenda. Do we have any proposed changes to the agenda?
We do not. Okay, you've redacted the zone change application.
Yes.
All right.
So then, I guess what my colleagues referencing is that we did have an application for a rezoning of a property to be one up on Middle Branch and Apple Grove, and that's been withdrawn by written notification from the applicant. Is that correct, Tom?
Correct.
All right, so what remains appears to be the amendments 569, 570, 571, 572, related to dumpsters, roll-offs, and donation collection bins. I guess since, I'll make a note that there's no members of the public here, so I'm going to dispense with the reading of the statement of duties and procedure for the conducting of the meeting. Let's look at the minutes from the last meeting wherein, if you recall, we did have a court recorder here. I'm assuming these are somehow prepared. Oh, John's, John prepared these. I think John's the court reporter. Oh, okay.
We may have had to see.
Who needs a court reporter?
Hey Greg, how do these compare to my minutes?
I don't like them as much as your minutes.
I'm the secretary of the Refuge of Hope Ministries Board of Directors.
Should forget the E in all my last names.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve amendments submitted for the last meeting of November 14th?
So moved.
And seconded.
And seconded. Any discussion, corrections, and deletions, additions to the minutes?
They seem accurate.
Well, except I misspelled Mr. Wolf's name, so I apologize for that.
Oh, it was you, that was the.
No.
Oh, then you're the one that is.
I'm the culprit. I apologize. So line three where it says, "Member Wolf," we have to add an E at the end of his name? That's what we have to do.
Line three and at the end.
Any other corrections, additions, deletions?
And when I say there's motion on the same page.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed? Okay, minutes are approved. So let's go to tonight's business of the text amendments. This amendment was proposed and submitted by the trustees initially. It looks like similar language was submitted for text changes, and that Regional Planning came back with recommendation of approval with modifications, and I guess it was reported at the last meeting that those modifications to the text were actually in the process of just being received and analyzed by Tom, and that we set that matter then for today to allow for an analysis of that. And Tom, are you going to be advocating on behalf of the township for the amendments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll go ahead then.
We have the commercial dumpster roll-off container. We had a resident in an R2 zone have a roll-off container parked in front of this house, actually this trailer, and used it as his everyday trash container with periodic pickup from their, the company that rolled it in. We had nothing on the books that said he couldn't have a large trash container, and the neighborhood was up in arms. The trustees sought out zoning and said, "Can't we get something in place in case it ever happens again?" And so the, this was put together.
Okay, so this was in response to a particular offensive situation that hadn't previously been addressed by our zoning code, is that right?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, is the condition still?
Condition has been corrected.
Okay.
Voluntarily.
Oh, okay.
After much.
Adu?
Adu.
Not duh-duh, but adu. Okay.
Cenjoling me.
I think I know where this was.
Okay.
There you.
Oh, okay, and there's another.
Uh-oh.
I'm glad we have cooperative citizens, that's a good thing. So have you reviewed the amendments proposed or modifications proposed by RPC?
I have.
Is the applicant in favor or amenable to the modifications?
Yes.
100%?
No, they like to get the wording in place as soon as possible.
And the applicant is okay with the modifications as proposed by RPC?
As proposed by RPC. Well, and they're actually leaving it up to you, the board, to refine.
You know, we don't always follow the recommendations of RPC, but in this case it does seem to be, at least to me, some of this appeared to be tidying up some of the, not only the locations within the, our book that these definitions and what actually go, but also tightened up, I would say, some of the specifics in the definitions. Where did we get the initial definitions that you submitted that RPC was in fact modifying? Where did those originate?
For the dumpster, from a couple of their townships that I found that did have, very few have anything to do with dumpsters.
Okay.
Nobody has that problem, but I was able to locate a couple and try and put the wording together from those.
Okay, so this was developed internally within our zoning department?
Yes.
Initially. Gentlemen, any, do you have anything further to add, Tom?
No, sir.
Move to approve?
Oh, I would, that's my second.
Just to get a discussion.
Second.
Text amendment.
Do we have a motion from Member Rambacher and a second by Member Crawford to approve the text amendment as modified per Regional Planning Commission? Is that what I understand?
That's correct, yes.
Is this for all four?
No.
Just for respect to. Just 60215 for start.
That's correct. That's for commercial dumpsters and roll-off containers, the definition.
Well, standards.
Any discussion on that? Then we'll call the, call the question. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. And now we're looking for.
Now, that was definitions we hoped at.
Right.
Just approved.
It was a definition.
I'm sorry. I read it as general standards and special provisions at the very top.
That should be the commercial dumpster and roll-off container.
60215, yeah, as written, was to go in 60215. It's not a, it is not a definition.
Correct. Okay. I mischaracterize it as that, if that affects anyone's decision on their vote, we'd like to know now, because I'm thinking we approved 602.15, general standard and special provisions entitled "Commercial Dumpster and Roll-Off Containers."
Yes, that's true.
Does everyone understand to be correct?
I know what it was before.
All right, now we're on definitions article Roman numeral four, "Commercial Dumpster Roll-Off Containers," originally proposed, and then the RPC correction underneath it. Do we have a motion with respect to that proposed text change?
So moved.
As to approving the RPC correction version?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second to put it on the table.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Motion by Member Crawford, second by Member Seberger, to adopt the definition of "Commercial Dumpster and Roll-Off Containers" as modified by RPC to read, "A commercial dumpster/roll-off container is any unit designed for the collection of large quantities of trash, yard waste, garbage, building or construction debris, trees or limbs, and designed to be delivered and picked up by a truck. This does not include a garbage can which can be moved by a person." Any discussion on that?
Yeah, what is, like, what's the cutoff for large? I mean, I see that in the original version that was submitted, there's at least an effort to quantify large as at least 10 cubic yards. I mean, I don't know whether the corrective version would create an ambiguity or not. I mean, I think the RPC correction is meaningful to the normal person, but.
If I may, it seems to me they decided, the way I'm reading it, is the section where it says, "Designed to be delivered and picked up by a truck."
Yeah, I saw that, too.
That seems to be the size-related element to that, which could lead to further ambiguity, but it also leads to some variety, and if somebody had a 9.5 cubic yard trailer, they were stuck with having to let it stay there.
Yeah, I understand, and in part, yeah. It also included the garbage can, which can be moved by a person.
Yeah, I'm understanding a garbage can that can be moved by a person means unassisted, meaning you can roll it on the wheels, it might be built onto the garbage can, as opposed to a person gets a hoist and lifts it from a pickup truck into their driveway.
And you're, what you two are both saying is common sense. Every once in a while, there's somebody who has no common sense, like the guy who sent me a package from Bucknell Circle. Oh, it's worse.
What you proposed, Terry.
I don't.
Guess the question is, are we comfortable with all aspects of the RPC correction?
You know what I'm going to vote for?
I'm comfortable with it, and I think you're right there. It's going to be weasels, but as long as common sense and typical layman's understanding and definitions, I think this is tight enough. And I don't really want to draw a line at 10 cubic yards, maybe eight cubic yards would be offensive. That might not be the standard. I don't know what the industry standard is for dumpsters or whatnot, but if it's bigger than one person can move, I think that would be the kind of thing we don't necessarily want in a residential area.
A cubic yard of compact debris is going to weigh close to a ton, so 10, so, yeah, 10 cubic yards is already a pretty massive.
A hundred and two.
That's a small container. Yeah.
Well, the only thing, maybe, you know, the only thing, I don't know, I agree, I'm willing to vote for this as laid out, but you could put language in there which can readily be moved by a single person. I mean, there's a couple of.
But I would carry a close.
I mean, you could probably work on that all night long, so it hasn't been an ongoing problem that people have complained about. If it becomes one, we can maybe readdress the definition at a later date.
Okay, any other discussion? Let's call it, let's call the, if you, those in favor of the definition per the RPC correction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Inanimately carried. Let's go now to article Roman numeral six, general standard and special provisions, section 602.16 regarding a donation collection bin. I see markups to apparently reflect.
Wait, which one are you on? 57 what?
I'm sorry, 602.16. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the actual text.
Yeah, I'm looking at it here, yeah. Just trying to make sure I'm on the right page.
Is that the amendment 570-1?
It's looking at this.
571.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually.
It looks like 18, that's what I'm trying to get to. It looks like.
They're only two.
Well, I mean, but they're 572.
I think 5701 and.
Donation. This is 57.
This is 518.
Donation collection. This is 572.
No, we're 57.
It looks like 572 based on the title, "Donation Collection Bin."
Okay, so we're jumping to number four on the agenda?
I see, I see, there it is.
This is for three and four, isn't it?
Number two on the agenda. We want number two on the agenda, amendment 570-18, which is donation collection bins. And that's a text amendment.
This one has come up several times. What happens is we have a vacant property, and all of a sudden, a donation bin will pop up on that property. We'll end up with mattresses and old furniture. Everything gets dumped, it becomes the local dump. You try and call the number on the, from the box, and you get, there's no answer, you get no callback.
I think the problem that I was trying to identify, I think some of the others are, the order that we were giving them are not in the same order on the agenda.
Right.
So the numbers don't match up with the titles. I mean, may have voted under the wrong number for the second one.
No, no, we passed the text change.
Okay.
569-18, and that related to the commercial dumpster and roll-off. And then we passed 571-18, which was the definition.
Okay.
Relative to dumpster, roll-off container definition, so we skipped, we went out of order on the agenda, leaving item two and item four marked as new business on the agenda without the discussion, and I think the one that's presented now is the 570-18, which is the text change relative to donation collection bins. Now I'm going to move to approve such amendment with any comments directed, belted thereto by Regional Planning for purposes of discussion.
Second.
And this is 570?
This is 570-18.
So we have a motion and a second motion by Member Rambacher and second by Member Wolf, or, oh, Member Crawford, sorry. Discussion, gentlemen?
I just have a, see a numbering issue. We got rid of section 15, so 16, which was added, should become 15.
We just passed 15. 60215.
Yeah, we just did, that was a dumpster.
No, 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 I'm the, I'm looking at 60216.
Yep, yep.
If you look at the numbered sub-paragraphs, the very last two are 15 and 16. 15 has been eliminated.
Oh, 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 oh.
So it should be turned into sub-paragraph 16, or it should become 15.
I get that, yeah, I agree.
That's all, I was trying, simple, simple thing.
Yeah.
But worthy of correction.
So as I understand it now, we're at placement of collection bins, and we're looking at the section that appears to be designated section 602.16, and you're saying that should be 602.15?
No. Go to the end of this section, second page, very end, there are sub-paragraphs. 15 has been eliminated, so 16 should be on the 15th.
Gotcha now, gotcha.
Sorry if I was not clear earlier.
I eventually got it.
Well, look, I've been confused about everything else, I'm glad I got something right.
I have just a, any further discussion about this?
Yeah, potentially.
Okay, I'm wondering if 501(c)(3) tax exempt charitable organizations are the only type of organization that we want to allow collecting bins? I mean, there are charities that aren't necessarily 501(c)(3)'s.
But it allows us a standard to enforce.
Yep, I agree.
And does every charity that we want to allow to have collection bins necessarily have a 501(c)(3)?
Some of them will be, some of them will have an pending application.
Is a church, for example, always a 501(c)(3), usually?
Yeah.
There are other, there are other tax exemptions under 501 in addition to c)(3).
That's true.
And are they charitable in nature that we would want to be able, do we have to have the three on there, is what I'm really asking?
We might just be able to say presentation of a tax exempt charitable organization.
Documentation.
Question, what is the, what is, for the solicitations, the township issues, what's the standard there?
The basic standard is you can't go in a residential area.
Right.
You can be a business and go in a business area, commercial area, but you cannot go in a commercial. If you're a 501(c)(3), a high school, a church, then you can go into a residential area.
Right, so that's why, that's what I thought, the standard for the.
So good at school.
Door-to-door solicitations in residential areas is a 501(c)(3), correct? So there's precedent for using that number. Whether we want to continue that precedent, I'm not registering an opinion one way or the other.
You're saying for consistency of enforcement, the same standard for solicitation could be applied in this case, or you're suggesting we consider that?
I like it the way it's written, but I'm not wed to the idea. I mean, there are other sections to 501. c)(3) seems to be the one that's, there's no question about it being a true charity, there may be some issues about some of the other 501 sections that people may have an issue with, so I'm not sure I want to open it up the door wide, but if there's specific subdivision we'd like to discuss, I'm open to that as well.
I mean, the IRS issues tax exempt determination letters, I'm not, I'm not sure that 501(c)(3) is the exclusive vehicle for that. I know that 501(c)(4), for example, would be for nonprofit advocacy and groups, and there's probably the c)(1) and c)(2) and c)(5, but all of them to have tax exempt status will receive an IRS tax exempt determination letter?
Does the school, you said a school can do solicitations?
Yes.
Is a school necessarily a 501(c)(3)?
Behind you.
And again, I would have no objection to a school doing a fund, or a drive where they collect clothing, toys, whatever, for a Christmas time, you know, whatever, like that, but this would preclude that.
The reason that's in there is because there are many organizations who are for-profit who put those boxes out there, and there's quite a bit of money to be made and used. What they do is take the good furniture, or furniture that looks halfway decent, paint it up a little bit, and they sell it for quite a bit of money. So they're, they're in it for the money entirely. I don't mind a charity going out and doing that, and the charity is much easier to control.
Right.
They're going to have a number and a place to call. If you can't get them at that number, I can find out a number to call, and they're more willing to work with you when it comes to pick up on this stuff. Sometimes they don't pick up the mattresses and furniture for a month, or another time they'll come back in a few days, you just don't know.
So is there a way to be able to police this? For instance, if somebody wanted to put a box anywhere, they'd have to come to Plain Township Hall first?
They would have to get a permit.
Get the permit so that you have the names of the people that are.
Yes, the contacts and everything. And this also, if they put it on a piece of property that's vacant, they're going to have to show us a letter from the owner that it's approved.
Do we have that in place now?
No.
So this could change that?
Nothing. They just throw them out there, and I can't do any of them.
Right.
Except spend the township money to clean them up.
So with this new system, would we have something in place like that, where we could police that?
Yes.
And then, worst case scenario, somebody put it on a vacant lot, that we can find the owner of that lot?
Yeah, so you look here.
And find them.
Under 602.16, that's what the first three paragraphs, numbered paragraphs, talk about.
Right. Well, it talks about what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do, but it's not talking about the policing of it.
Well, it talks about issuing to the zoning permit.
Okay, yeah, that would miss.
So my question went to not who the owner was and what kind of property can go on, but as far as an applicant that comes in for a permit, if they were a school or a church that we know is an established charity or a purpose that we would probably be amenable to them doing this, would they still have to tell a 501(c)(3) or would that happen?
Or a tax exemption determination letter. A school would not have one.
Right, and that's why I'm wondering if we should say.
The church normally will, but not always.
So what if the applicant were either a church, school, or a 501(c)(3) tax exempt charitable organization?
I don't think you limit it to 501(c)(3).
Yeah, I would take out the 501(c)(3) and leave in the words "tax exempt charitable organization," and then make a determination out. You know, we cover schools and maybe churches which don't have a tax exempt determination letter.
So you're saying just delete the 501(c)(3)?
Correct.
And then we leave it to the enforcement officer to somehow verify satisfactory proof of that it's a charitable organization?
Well, this presentation has to be expanded, has to be presentation of a determination letter or other form of.
Verifiable tax exempt charitable organization.
Presentation of, proof of?
Just take, take out the 501(c)(3), put "verifiable," that's the first step. And it doesn't address our school issue, but it addresses the charity issue.
It's a little bit awkward, because it says "presentation of," so it contemplates presenting something.
Well, not all schools are public.
Well, maybe "verify presentation of a tax exempt charitable organization."
You establish as a.
You could just say which is a verifiable tax exempt charitable organization.
How do we, okay.
It's not, is that.
We don't even need the words "and," "presentation."
No, which is verified.
Yeah, just take out, just, and, yeah.
Just legal representative of a verifiable tax exempt organization or public school.
I would say plain township, township school. I mean, they don't want other school districts coming in here doing.
What about St. Paul's or?
Yeah. Private schools.
Private schools a lot.
They are, they are covered under the group ruling.
Yes.
Which was just issued yesterday. There's one group ruling for the entire United States that refers.
There's one group ruling for the entire United States that refers to the Kennedy Catholic Directory, which is yaythid, tiny print and includes every Catholic entity in the country, believe me. And there's a whole load of them.
As being what, for our purpose?
Yeah, but they're not all, not all these schools are, township are necessarily Catholic.
No, what I'm saying, the, the schools that are in the township are going to be.
That's verifiable tax exempt.
Plainville, North Canton for parts of the township.
Yeah, that's true.
And Catholic schools, I don't know that they're, I mean, there could be other schools. I don't know charter schools, I don't know. I don't know if there are any Jewish or Protestant schools, I just don't know. I haven't seen them.
I haven't seen one either.
Okay, so back, let's focus on number three again. The discussion seems to be concentrating on tweaking the language that restricts this to 501(c)(3)'s and instead substituting some language that is more inclusive of churches and schools.
Can I ask, what would, what would like Goodwill Industries or Toys for Tots, what would that fall under?
Those would be tax exempt organizations.
Those would be tax.
I guarantee you they're tax exempt. They, believe me, they're getting their tax exempt determination letters. You know, with regularity, the oddballs are going to be the schools, churches that haven't bothered to give a tax exempt determination letter and booster clubs for schools, which may also not have.
They often do, but they don't necessarily.
Yeah, I would think they often do. It's usually going to be the booster club, not the school itself.
Tom, where were these containers going? You said this is kind of a problem, people.
Well, we have the Kmart emptied out, they went out of business. And right after that, several containers, collection bins showed up. The gas station at Columbus and 62, an old Speedway, I think.
Spitfire.
Spitfire. Then it has one or two of them on it. And now it has a ton of, we just went down and picked up mattresses and old torn furniture. Two days later, there's three or four mattresses laying out there. Then there's up on Market Street, there's another one. Every place that empties, that goes out of business, they seem to pop up. There was an empty lot on Market as the, at the off-ramp of the free.